...meeting of November nineteen, twenty nineteen has come to order. Can we please get the presentation of the colors at this time, please? Okay, at this time, Reese Brown, would you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? Please remain standing, Mayor Protim.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our military first responders that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Join me now, please.
At this time, we're gonna have the invocation. Are we gonna dismiss the color guard at this time? Please dismiss the guard. Okay, may I have roll call, please, at this time. We'll come to you in a minute.
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista, present. Councilmember Aguilar, present. Councilmember King, present. Mayor Protim Garcia, present. Mayor Samra, present. For the record, councilmembers Mayor Protim and Mayor are in attendance.
Okay, at this time, we will have an invocation by Police Chaplain Michael and a priest from the Gurdwara. So, Ganeji, where do you go, where do you go, Ganeji?
It's about ears and prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight. Thank you for the meetings about to take place. I ask that you bless this time, bless the meeting, bless all the responders, as was mentioned before, first responders, and all those who take part in keeping the peace and safety of our community. So, Father, I ask you to give the council wisdom, guide them, protect them, and tonight, we pray for our new dispatcher, Lanny Brown, and for our new sergeant, Apprendice King. I ask you to bless them, protect them, as they serve our community and our country, and lead them and guide them in all safety, bless their families and everyone here, that we have a safe place in Livingston we call home, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, at this time, Reese Brown, would you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, at this time, we're gonna have the invocation. Are we gonna dismiss the color guard at this time? Please dismiss the guard. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go to closed session announcements. There were no reportable action at this time. Counsel, changes to the agenda? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Will we still be going into closed session after the meeting? There was some minor business left that need to be taken care of. Counsel, changes to the agenda? Are we still gonna leave the public hearing before the staff announcements, or are we gonna leave it the way it is? The public hearing? Yeah. Okay, we're gonna move the staff reports to the end. So, at this time, we'll go into recognizing the Livingston Explorer Post by Jose Antonio Ramirez and Chief Chavez.
Can we get all the explorers up front, please? We're gonna have you guys, all the explorers up front, please. You need to face the audience. Not like you haven't done that before, because you guys are always in the community helping out. I apologize to counsel if their backs to you. I mean, we could probably have half front, half back, but I think it's important to have them facing the community. So, we just wanna take a few minutes to acknowledge the work of the Explorer Post and Officer Valdivia, well, he's in the back taking pictures. We started this post together, City Manager and I started this post together about seven years ago, and they have, hey, guys, come up front. These guy, this troop has been a humongous benefit to the city. Not only do they provide a lot of volunteer time directing traffic in different events, at parades, going into away details, directing traffic, making sure people don't get to where they're, that they're not supposed to be. It's also a, an organization that helps to build them as leaders in the future. They learn discipline, teamwork, leadership skills. We have one explorer, Isaac, who will be joining the National Guard here coming up next year. We have another explorer who's actually got hired by Modesto PD. These folks, they learn a lot of skills and they go on to do great things, and we're just so proud of the work they do. In fact, I just got a check, they helped with the craft feed, the Rotary Craft Feed last Saturday, they helped with the, with that event, and Brandon Friesen just provided a donation of five hundred dollars for their work, and this is very common for them, it's a tribute to what they do in their community, and I'll let, I'll let City Manager take it over, but I can't thank them enough. You see them out there, a lot of events, and they do it, they get it in their heart. Right now, we have a detail where they're out at the Police Department, signing up families to see Santa Claus in this room, and I think there was like eight of them today, and they're just excited to serve the community and serve the department. So, I just wanna thank them, and Jose.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chief. I wanna, I wanna thank the chief for his leadership and the department, because without the department and the chief, really, this program would be splintered, would probably not be working the way it's currently working, and I also wanna thank all of the explorers for all the service hours. But I wanna talk a little bit more of how deep this particular organization is having a great impact, not only here in Livingston, but in the region. So, we do a lot of regional work, but here locally, you know, there's, every event that we have, you know, they're, one way or another, they're, they're actually participating, and the fact that, that they can exercise and we can develop leaders here locally, you know, making sure that there's activities for them, you know, after hours, the fact that they are also our liaisons within the community and with their own parents and their own siblings, that means a lot, and so for that, I really wanna thank you. So, I wanna, I wanna share just a little bit about what they've done in twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, they've participated in the Pebble Beach, Laguna Seca, the EJ Gallo Events, all the festivals, the parades, football games, special events, and just all kinds of just charity events, like the chief mentioned with the Rotary Club. So, to date, that's been eighty-nine different activities, with the total of, we're talking over three thousand hours of community service, about, let's see, a total of, okay, so the grand total is twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-eight hours. Can you, just give them a round of applause, that's a lot. So, with the little bit of, so what five thousand dollars of seed money did, you know, back in twenty twelve, you know, has, has helped the community, you know, become a better knit community, because as you can see, it's very diverse, and I like to see all the young females participating as well, and we have, we have a lot of great participation, a lot of respect, so for that, I thank you all, thank you, Chief, and again, give them another round of applause.
Well, thank you, and these type of organizations couldn't be possible with a great staff, and I wanna acknowledge Officer Valdivia, he's been it from the get-go and just done an outstanding job, just leading them, and he's invested so many hours in these kids, and it, and it shows, these kids are doing great things. In fact, I forgot to mention, I think Julian's gonna be joining the, the military next year too, right? The Army? Go Army, Sergeant Fong likes that. Be all you can be, so, and we have a rank structure, we actually have captains, lieutenants, sergeants. They learn that rank structure, and that helps them in the future, so, again, thank you, guys and girls, I appreciate all the work you do and continue to work, and we will, we will see you at the next event. Thank you. Again, best of luck.
Okay, on item number four, this is a presentation of one thousand dollar scholarship to the Explorer Bernice Arias by Livingston Police Foundation President Heather Friesen and Treasurer Julie Sigenger. Can you please come forward?
And as Heather Friesen has served as the Foundation President from the get-go, and Julie as a treasurer, and while I have Julie up here, I'm gonna give her that donation check from, from the Rotary, from, for that, so I'm gonna present that to you first, because I got you here in the, in the room, and I will let Heather take over.
Tonight, we have a check to present to Bernice Arias. She is a graduate of Livingston High School in two thousand nineteen. She had more community service hours than any other student in the school for two thousand nineteen, or I guess in her four years of high school, which is a, a great feat in itself. She attends Cal State Santa Claus, and she's a criminal justice major, and it's our pleasure to present you with this thousand dollars to help you pay for your college education.
Do you mind, hey, Officer Valdivia, can you come up and take a quick picture for us, real quick?
Okay, Chief, you also have the introduction of the new Police Dispatcher, Lanny Brown, and Wapender Sergeant, well, we can't say sergeant yet, not until we're still corporal. Yeah, still corporal until he says I do, even though he is wearing stripes.
It's, it's, good evening to Mayor Members of Council, community, law enforcement, family, it's, it's an honor to be here, and I love to see a full room like this, this is outstanding, especially for, for our city. So, before I, before I start, I'd like to acknowledge, normally acknowledge the kind of the, the managers of our agency, and I'd like to acknowledge, they're walking over there, Deanna Soria and Maribel, Maribel's the Communications Manager, she runs Communications and Records, and Deanna's Administrative Services Managers. Between those two, they, they do so much work for the department, and I don't know what we'd do without them. They're, they're the folks behind the green curtain that make it all happen, so, thank you, ladies. So, it's our, our pleasure to introduce our newest dispatcher, Lonnie Brown, and I'm gonna have Lonnie come up front here in a second.
We're honored to introduce her to the community, and also to introduce and promote one of our own, Wapender King, from corporal to sergeant. They're gonna be tasked with one of the most important jobs any city has to offer, keeping our community safe, and I'd like to, I'd like to read a quote from a Harvard graduate and the former Secretary of Treasurer, Jack Lew, who once said, "There's no higher calling in terms of a career than public service, which is a chance to make a difference in people's lives and improve the world," and I truly believe that, these folks are going to make a difference in people's lives. There's a lot, there's a lot of movies that have come out that talk about police officers and excitement of police chases and arrests and gun battles and things like that, and there's a few about fire department and some movies about them, but less than that, how many movies do they show depicting a dispatcher at work? There's a couple, and The Call is one of them, one of the movies that show the stress that dispatcher goes through, having to answer a call, have to input data into a computer, talking on the radio, talking on the phone, talking to people, handing things, all that multitasking is so seamless. They are truly a special, special employee, special people that work for the Police Department as well as for the community, in keeping our community safe, and I'm just so proud of the work they, they do. It's just amazing that, that the work that dispatchers do for our city. In the end, those folks that call, that need help, that are desperate to get help, whether it's police, fire, paramedics, to that location, they have to decipher all that and put it in, and in the end, that caller who's distraught is gonna be relieved to hear those five words, "Help is on the way," and that's gonna relieve them, and, and we're gonna get those, that help to them as soon as possible. Before I talk about being a supervisor, I wanted to acknowledge, we, we put these folks through a very rigorous process. All the applicants had to go through three separate oral boards, they had to go through a community panel, they had to go to professional panel, they had to go to my, my interview with, with me, and they had to take a written test, written exercise, and I, I wanna acknowledge just a couple of people who actually asked for permission, because I hate to, you know, acknowledge somebody who, who was behind the scenes, but Catherine Shell Rodriguez was on our community panel, Jose Moran, Julio Belades, and I'm not sure if there's anybody else in the room. Oh, Brandon Friesen, sorry, Brandon. Brandon was actually the main, the main community member that was on the panel, and they, these folks, they're volunteering their time to sit in this room and spend hours and hours interviewing the applicants and deciphering them, whether, what kind of leadership style do they have, what kind of critical thinking are they, you know, all these different things that they have, have to measure each candidate, and they did a great job. In the end, and all, after everything was said and done, Wapender was selected to be our next, our next supervisor, and being a supervisor is no easy task. Being a sergeant for, for a department such as Livingston, you've gotta have all the answers, you gotta ensure that our department doesn't get sued. You, when somebody, a young officer comes to you and asks you a question, you have to be ready to answer that question. So, once Wapender is promoted, come, when he comes back to work, he's gonna be responsible for a lot of programs, that administrative work is just gonna, lots, lots of administrative work, so be careful what you wish for, so, he'll do a fine job, he did a great job, and he'll do a fine job as one of our supervisors. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce both Lonnie and Wapender, if I can have Lonnie come up to the front of the office, or front of the room here? You're gonna stand right in the middle there, and you're gonna face this fabulous audience. Yeah. So, Lonnie was born in Turlock and grew up in Hillmore, graduating from Hillmore High School, and after attended Modesto Junior College for a short period. Lonnie later went on to work for AT&amp;T Wireless as a communications specialist for six years, which prepared her for a career in communications, I think that very fitting. She would also go on to manage a Nextel dealer, and later, she would also develop her skills at dealing with the public, working as a customer service agent at Medic Alert for over six years, again, very fitting for, for you and your future profession. At some point, becoming a mom became the highest priority, and she, she became a stay-at-home mom for two years. She missed working with the public and went to work at a jewelry store in Turlock. I think she probably missed some of that bling, being a, being a mom and with those kids, and she had to get back in that bling a little bit. Lonnie then tested for dispatcher with us and was glad to accept the offer to be a dispatcher with the Livingston Police Department. Lonnie currently serves on a board of DNR Football and Cheer, and I asked Councilmember Baptista if she was familiar with that, because she serves on the Livingston Football and does a great job, so, I don't know that they'll be playing each other in the future, but if they do, I, I sure hope you're on the right side. She's also a big Fortuniner fan. I'll tell you, tell you a funny story. She had this really nice Fortuniner purse, logoed purse, that she was gonna bring to the interview with me, not knowing I'm a Raider fan, and a friend of hers says, "Hey, you know what, you better not bring that purse, because you know, it might not go very well." But you know, it's, it's, it's all good, because she changed her purse and came with a very, but, I actually got a really nice Raider purse when she's ready to upgrade, so, it's in my office when you're ready for a nice, little, little higher style, so. Also, Lanny is a bowling aficionado, she's, she bowls in a bowling league with her mom, so, that's good. She's very excited to be here as a dispatcher and looks forward to keeping our community safe. Attending tonight's ceremony is her husband, Tom, of seventeen years, and her children, Reese and Harlan, also, Lanny's mother and stepfather, Lucille and David Costa. I gotta ask, David Costa, any relation to Jim Costa? Because, no?
No.
We need, we need some federal grants, I figure we can send, okay. Her father and stepmother, Joe and Kathy Bronco, her sister-in-laws, Marilyn Bronco and Christine Laura, and her two nephews, Jaxx and Bex and Bronco. Presenting Lonnie with her badge tonight will be her husband, Tom, and we will do that as soon as we have both her and Wapender sworn in, so, this is Lonnie Brown, our newest dispatcher. Okay, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Wapender King come up to the front and face the community, you will serve as a sergeant with our department. And a Fortuniner fan. And a Fortuniner fan. No, no, no? So, Wapender was born in Punjab, India, and came to Livingston in nineteen ninety-two when he was only six years old. He grew up here in Livingston, graduating from Livingston High School in two thousand and five, where he played basketball. While in high school, Wapender worked the world famous Foster Farms Cafe as a dishwasher and a cook, so, I know he knows hard work, because there's, that's a busy place over there. He also had a few short stints as a security guard and a Verizon Wireless salesperson. Now, when you work for Verizon, do you buy any stock back then, because right now, it's probably worth a little bit of money, but, Wapender attended Mercy College for a short time, is now attending Union Institute and University, well, he will graduate with a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice Management in April of next year. Good for you, that, that, that degree is gonna serve you well as a new sergeant. Wapender was hired as a reserve officer in two thousand ten and became a full-time officer with us a year later. He was also sworn in this year as a planning commissioner, and I asked him why, you know, why are you going to planning commission? He wanted to serve the community another way. I mean, he serves as, as a corporal now, but he wanted to serve it even more as a planning commissioner, so, that's gonna be, keep you busy both ways, so. So, attending tonight's ceremony is his wife, J. Tinder Core, with their daughter, Amberk Core King, who turns five months today, is that right? All right. Also attending our Wapender's parents, Amerek Singh and Rajwinder Core, also, his brother and sister-law, Councilmember Gangandeep Gang, and Harpreet Core. Being on his new badge will be his wife, J. Tender. And so, I would like to invite the mayor to come up and do the oath of office, and if you come back up, Lonnie, we're gonna do an oath together here, and then we'll have the loved ones come up and, and, and by all means, I'd like the family members that are gonna take pictures, come on up and be in the front row here, take a few photos, don't worry about blocking anybody's view, as long as it's not their parents, but you can come up here in the front, and don't be shy, come on up here. You know, one of the greatest honors you have is to welcome a new member to the city Livingston family, and also even an equal honor, if not greater, is that when a particular member of the Livingston City family member gets promoted or advances themselves, so tonight, I have the honor of doing both. So, first, as always, you know, how we celebrate the new arrivals and so forth, we're gonna start out with our Lanny Brown, so our new dispatcher, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? I, Lanny Brown.
I, Lonnie Brown.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Let's try, and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. Don't worry about blocking anybody's view as long as it's not their parents, but you can come up here in the front, and, uh, don't be shy. Come on up here and we'll...
You know, uh, one of the greatest honors you have is to welcome a new member to the City Livingston family, and also even a equal honor, if not greater, is that when a particular member of the Livingston City family member, uh, gets promoted or moves, advances themselves. So tonight, I have the honor of doing both. So first, as always, you know, how we celebrate the new arrivals and so forth, we're gonna start out with our Lanny Brown, so our new dispatcher. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? I, Lanny Brown.
I, Lonnie Brown.
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Let's try it. And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance...
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely...
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well...
And I will, well.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
You know, I thought you were a Niner fan.
No, sir.
Are we gonna have to get into this one right here? Do I have to have you also, uh, affirm swear, oath to the Niners too, at the same time, or... No, you know what? Let's do this, buddy. Let's do this, okay? All right. I, Walt Pender King, do solemnly swear and confirm...
Do solemnly swear and confirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear this truth, faith, that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will, well...
That I will, well.
Faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I refuse to call him sergeant from Sunday, even though he was officially a sergeant. Now we can say Sergeant King, okay?
Okay, as soon as they're done signing, I'll have, uh, J. Tender and, and Tom come up, and, uh, what we normally do is we have the loved one pin the badge on, and, uh, Lonnie's gonna be in her, her other uniform, and Tom will present her with the badge. But I will present her also with one of our challenge goals, being a, a new employee for the department, which shows our values, uh, compassion, courage. Yeah, compassion, courage, and integrity. So that's for you. Welcome. And, uh, can have, uh, J. Tender and Tom come up, and Deanna, if I could have you come up with the badges. And again, if somebody wants to come and take a picture, please, again, you're, this is your, this is your time. I want to thank all, all the department members that are here, and, uh, hey, Mr. Wiley, all right. Miss Brian Wiley, retired, uh, not retired, I guess, uh, former Livingston officer that went on to, uh, another occupation, so thank you all for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce you, Dispatcher Lonnie Brown and Sergeant Walt And your first assignment, if you want to accept it, is to make a, make any comments, if you like.
No, I don't need a microphone. I'm pretty cool. All right, I just wanted to thank my family, Lonnie. Um, my mother loved war, so I'm pretty much, you know, well, um, I think I'm a good mom and I'm pretty much, you know, so maybe that's a little important to you, so, um, good luck.
Okay, uh, we're gonna take like a five-minute recess so we can take some photos and everybody can, uh, get to meet each other, so we're gonna take a few-minute break here. Thank you.
Okay, we are back in session. Uh, we're gonna be moving on to item number eight. This is the public hearing, this is a resolution approving the site plan. Oh, before I begin, uh, say clerk, would you like to make a, an- uh, announcement of the two members that are now present at this time?
For the record, can- council member King and Mayor Protem Garcia left the council chambers.
Thank you, and moving on to item number eight, this is a public hearing. This is a resolution approving the site plan and design review for the Padilla Auto Sales Project on Campbell Boulevard. So at this time, uh, Mr. Hatch?
Not so much, the, uh, um... Well, he's not around. I apologize for not being here, I- there were a few more items on the, uh, agenda, the reports and all, so, uh...
No, it's okay, I announced, but that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, uh, trying to get the, uh, to advance the PowerPoint here. Thanks. Okay, this is a, um, request that's before you for approval of a site plan and design review for a, um, auto sales, um, business located on Campbell. And so, um, let me try to get to the, here we are, this is the site plan. And the location is where the star is, um, identified on the, on the map here. And, uh, this is zoned appropriately for a, um, um, auto sales facility, uh, subject to obtaining a conditional use permit, um, from the city council, this, um, excuse me, the planning commission. The, um, planning commission did in fact hold a notice public hearing on this in October, their October meeting, and granted a conditional use permit, they, uh, as our city code requires. They also looked at the site plan design review and recommended it to you, um, for approval. As you might recall, um, the planning commission has final authority unless appealed, uh, for conditional use permits, but a site plan design review goes to, um, the city council for final approval with recommendations from the planning commission. So what is, um, being proposed, oops, which button to push here? Oh, that's backup one. Okay, here is the site plan. Um, what is being proposed here is a portion of this larger lot. Uh, this larger lot is, um, let's see... It's approximately twenty-five thousand square feet, right here, is being used as the auto sales facility. The rest of the lot is being undeveloped and being, um, you know, expansion of a business or another business or what have you. So there is no, uh, lot line to divide it into separate lots, they're just using a portion of this lot. They have identified a, uh, approximately twenty-two parking spaces where they would, um, show the vehicles that are for sale. And then they have identified some, um, employee parking right in here. Um, customer parking across, um, the display lot. And a handicap space is located as well. And they have a one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square foot, uh, building which has offices, restrooms, storage space. Attached to that is a covered, um, patio area on the east which, um, is, uh, concrete, and you can kind of see it on this elevation down here. And that's where they're going to, um, um, wash and prep, um, the cars for sale. Um, the drainage water and so forth goes into a sanitary sewer. And so there is no, um, runoff or pollution that enters into the storm drain system, it goes into the sanitary system. And, um, if we take a look at the design of the building itself, um, what is being proposed is a stucco building. And it will have a, um, kind of a, um, taupe, what is taupe anyway? But anyway, it has a taupe color. And then, um, there is a base trim of, uh, rock, uh, on the, um, elevation. They do, are proposing, as is shown here, a, um, kind of arcade type structure that's on the, um, east side and the south side, which is the front facing, um, Campbell. You can perhaps see it a little bit better here, and that defines, it's architecturally enhances the building. It defines, uh, the main entrance, as you can see here, through, um, some double glass doors. And that adds additional opportunity to add, um, color with the, um, top cap along with the base rock trim, the colored stucco, and then some lightweight concrete, um, tiles for, uh, the roofing material. And so, um, that's the design itself of the, of the structure. The, um, I'm gonna kind of go back to the...
While you do that, Randy, I'll just share with council that some of the feedback that staff provided back to Padilla's Auto Sales, originally they had proposed a composition shingle for the, uh, for the roofing material and, and we communicated back that it's part of, uh, you know, the, the aesthetics and some of the theme that it would better be enhanced if there was some, uh, light concrete tile.
Right, and so we've worked with them on that, and the city does have a design guideline that applies to, uh, commercial buildings. And so I met with them, we went over those guidelines, and I had indicated that's what we were looking for, and they came in and modified their submittals. And, uh, part of their, these drawings does not, um, show, um, outdoor lighting, um, and does not show, uh, uh, their signage plan. And so the counts, the, uh, commission, as part of their use permit approv- approval, um, delegated to staff the administrative review of those elements so that as this gets built and we get into the stage, that it's time to talk about lighting, it's time to talk about signage, um, it's time to, to talk about landscaping in greater detail, uh, that, uh, we could administratively review that. Now, one of the issues that they're proposing is a five-foot wide, um, planter strip between the, the sales area, display area, and Campbell Boulevard. They're also sh- showing a ten-foot wide, um, landscaped, um, area, um, to the, um... How do I get this right, east side of the building, and, um... And then, uh, the materials that they sh- originally showed was a variety of trees, which are fine, they're type of trees that are on our list. They also showed turf being planted here, which is not okay. Um, they've had some palm tr- fan palm trees on this ten-foot wide, which is fine. So as a condition of approval that the planning commission imposed, that city standards requires, uh, for, uh, from a commercial use adjacent to a major street, Campbell Boulevard, that the landscape buffer needs to be ten feet wide instead of the proposed five feet. So that is something, they have plenty of room on the lot, they can move things back a little bit and allow for that. So that is a condition of approval, which, which they had no problems with. And that again was delegated to staff, um, to work, um, with them on the detailed planting plan for that. Uh, the planning commission, um, noted that there is an unimproved alley on the side. As a condition of approval that came from, um, the city engineer, they're required to, um, improve that alley and have an approved, um, intersection with Campbell Boulevard. So it's going to enhance the area. Uh, the planning commission felt that it would be desirable to have, uh, fencing as a buffer uh, on the, um, auto sales side, um, to, uh, protect the back of the residence from noise and glare and, and that type of a thing. So there is that condition on the use permit as well. Um, all these conditions are in your packet, um, as conditions of approval for the use permit, and I provided them for illustrative purposes. And so that's what's, um, before you. Um, the planning commission with those conditions, uh, recommend, they approved the use permit and recommended you approve the site plan design review. And, um, you know, to sum up, this is located in an appropriate zone. Um, um, they meet as conditioned, all of the city's standards and requirements. And, um, so I urge you to, uh, approve the site plan design review. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hatch. This is a public hearing and item is open to the public. Does anybody wish, from the public, wish to come forward? You may pl- please come forward.
Barbara Rutz of, uh, fourteen fifty-eight Main Street. I just have a question, where is the industrial park at this point? Oh, I'm looking there too.
There isn't an industrial, any industrial zoning in the immediate vicinity.
Okay.
So, if we're talking about an industrial park, um, where the Foster Farms facility is located is quite a bit, um... We don't have a city map here, but it's quite a bit, you know, on this scale, it would be way over in here someplace is where the, um, Foster Farms plant. But there is no industrial on this side of the freeway in this vicinity.
Okay. Cause I have...
Now, there is some industrial zoning on the other side of Hammett.
There on the s- uh, the...
That's quite a ways out.
There, there is a map, right?
And, and so that, that's probably the closest.
Yes, I believe that's what, uh, Ms. Rutzleff is asking. Yeah, that's on the other side of Hammett, this is...
It's located, again, using, uh...
Randy, there's a map.
It's located...
Randy?
Uh, Mr. Hatch?
Mr. Hatch, there's a, there's a map back there, if you can turn the light on real quick.
Yeah.
It's hidden there.
That's, that's next to Old Avenue, those areas.
Yeah. That way they, that way she can see.
Water infrastructure map, but what we're looking at is, um, this site here. Um, Industrial Drive is located here, so there is a pocket of industrial right here.
Okay.
And then the industrial I was referred to is this huge area from here.
Yeah, I'm interested in, in this. Yeah.
I don't know, it's close to Old Avenue, she knows, she knows. Okay, I think, she knows now. Do you have it, Mrs. Rutzleff? Okay, anybody else from the, uh, public that wish to comment on this item? If not, then, uh, this item is now closed, uh, council comments? No? Uh, okay, uh, go ahead, somebody was gonna say?
Just wondering, how, about how many auto sales are in Livingston?
Phew. There's, there's not a lot of, uh, auto sales businesses. This is actually relocating from an, um, on the, um, kind of in the, the near downtown area, not far from where we are here, uh, closer to the railroad track. That's, um, where Padilla's auto sales are presently located. They've run out of room, and so they are moving to this location. Um, so it's, it's adding an increased facility, but it's not adding a new, um, auto sales facility.
Uh, Mr. Hatch, will the current Padilla, or whatever the name is, will it continue to remain open, or will it, uh...
I, to the best of my knowledge, I believe their current location, um, will close as, as this one develops.
Okay, I think that would answer, uh, miss, I think that would answer your question, so, okay? So this, uh, net gain is zero, as it were, but...
But this is a, a much bigger facility than their current facility.
Mr. Agler, comments? Uh, also, I don't have anything, uh, so at this time, does anybody wish to make a motion? For the discussion?
I'll make a motion approving site plan and design review, twenty nineteen dash zero two for the Padilla Auto Sales Project on Campbell Boulevard approximately a hundred and sixty feet east of East Avenue, APN number zero two four dash one hundred dash zero zero five.
I have a motion by Councilman Agler, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Baptista, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Baptista?
Yes.
Council member Agler?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll go to announcements and reports. This was done for a particular reason. Uh, it was a request for the, by the family, they weren't able to attend, but it was a special request for them. But anyway, uh, moving on to announcements and reports, and then, uh, I don't see Supervisor Espinoza in the audience. We'll move on to staff announcements and reports, and we'll start off with financial, Mr. Grant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Okay, Public Works, Mr. Grant? Nothing? I see two from fire departments, so somebody's gonna speak probably. Uh, so, please come forward, as you, you know the rules, you know, you know, better than I do, Ryan, come on up.
Just real quick, we're, just so you guys know, uh, Cal Fire, they did the testing for a new battalion chief to replace Brock Carter, and he will be starting Monday, his name is Brian White, and then hopefully I'll bring him to the next city council meeting so he can introduce himself, so... That you guys know that that's, position's been filled.
You have somebody else you wanted to announce, or...
He has a report, I think it's number fourteen, that he's gonna go over.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Oh, there you go, perfect. Okay, giving again, uh, mayor and council. Just a quick update, I know I missed a couple of, a couple of meetings, but I'm sure Sergeant Fong represented us very well, and whole idea is to prepare our staff, um, and so I think it's good for him to be here. Last month, uh, all our managers and staff took a, took a training trip to go to the Central Valley Crime and Intelligence Analyst Conference. And the reason we went, it's a statewide conference, but it was in our backyard, it was right here in, um, Fish Camp. Um, so, it was a one, it was a one-day conference that, well, it's actually longer, but we went for just one day. And, uh, we learned so much, this is a, it's the cutting edge on technology, DNA, fingerprinting, blood typing, things like that. Uh, if, if you don't know, one of the most important, uh, positions that helps solve crimes are analysts, and a lot of departments have multiple, multiple analysts. Um, we are fortunate to have an analyst through the Viper program. But the, the things that have been learned now with DNA, uh, typing, um, you know, Joe, uh, Joe Garza, he's the chief of Reedley, and he actually represents Cal Chief, and he's a good guy. He was actually there to, uh, attend a event as well, but he, he gave us some good pointers on some things that we're working on. Uh, there was several different cases I highlighted, um, like Sierra Lamar case out of, uh, Morgan Hill, one of the very few times somebody was convicted of murder without a body. Uh, and they showed that the process, they showed a lot of things behind the scenes on how they came, um, to that arrest and some of the DNA that was processed, and how they identified the suspect. Just, just fabulous information that is gonna benefit us. And then the Golden State Killer, um, again, also, um, some information. And one of the things that Captain Sore and I are looking at, if there's any cold cases that we need to look at, and if any DNA is in, in our PD, in evidence, things like that, something we can... We brought that back to our department to help solve some crimes, so, good, uh, good training day. We also attended a strategic and succession planning workshop. Again, we've put out, uh, both a strategic plan and a succession plan. Uh, but I think it's a good opportunity to learn, uh, you know, best practices in putting those plans together. We actually learned a few things, there are a couple of things we, we, we put in our plan that probably weren't the best, to put, like, dates. Uh, one of the things they suggested is when you do a succession plan, don't put specific dates, and those are things that we did, and we learned. We learned from this, this workshop, we developed a lot of good relationships. Uh, Pete Dunbar, uh, the instructor, used to be the chief of Pleasant Hill, before that was Oakland PD, now he lives in Colorado, he came back to do this, this course, so excellent opportunity to, to learn on, on the subject. I know I joke a lot with my fire brethren, and, uh, it's all for fun, we're, we're both public safety. Uh, but I do have a lot of friends that are fire, uh, very close to a lot of them, but one of my friends, uh, Shannon Lewis became the, uh, division chief for the Stockton Police Department. A very historic department, very old, and, uh, it was something that I, I wanted to do, and I think, I think I was the only law enforcement person there in that room. Um, they had like ten people getting promoted, so it's, it was, uh, it was a great opportunity to con- continue and network with other agencies. Brian and I attended the, the funeral for, for Captain Paul Tadaro. And, uh, very impressed, very impressed with, with the memorial service for him, the, the level of, um, professionalism, the bag piping, uh, group, in fact, I think the governor was there for a short period of time, if, if I'm mistaken, yeah. The governor was there for a little bit. Um, so, again, I do, I do have a good relationship with our fire brethren, even though we, we beat them in softball last year, so we'll, uh... Our newly promoted sergeant and, uh, DJ Dami, uh, they attended a fundraiser for, uh, Harris County Deputy Sheriff, um, Sandeep Dollywall, down in Texas was murdered. And, uh, they did a fundraiser here locally with a lot of the, the local officers, and it was a, a, a good opportunity for our department to represent, um, on that scale. Many events, uh, as you can see, there's a few elected officials, city manager, the mayor, we attended Manuel Vera's, a special event that he hosts, um, every year. Again, it's a good opportunity to, to network and, and work with other cities and municipalities and honor, uh, the traditional event that he hosts, and support that in, uh, one of our biggest sweet potato growers in the valley. And so I think probably the biggest, so it's always a good opportunity to attend those events. Uh, Veterans Day Parade, which was on Monday, the eleventh. Again, it, uh, just a nice, nice event that, that was put together, and, uh, something they acknowledged, um, you know, all the veterans. And it was, it was actually a lot of fun, I, I enjoyed that time and going to the veterans' hall and, and spending some time over there. Again, with our elected officials, and Isaac Escobar, uh, the picture on the left, he's the one that, uh, it was very fitting as he signed up to go into the military, and he'll be deployed, um, next year. Again, I can't say enough about our explorers, all of the, the things that they do for our, our city, our community, our department, um, they're just fabulous. Again, lower right picture, uh, signing ups for, um, bringing kids to see Santa. There's always a, a lot of kids that, uh, wanna come out there and help with that, so can't say enough about the explorers. And, uh, Officer Baldevia, who's just, uh, he's a rock star. Uh, the trunk or treat, uh, this is some campus park, uh, photos. And, uh, again, uh, Officer Becerra and Sergeant Maris, um, they brought the police car out there and were giving out candy. Um, and they did that on their own dime, bought all the candy to give out to the kids. And again, I, I thought it was very fitting with the fire and, uh, and the police officer in costume together, walking, walking, uh, in that parade. As always, we encourage our officers to visit schools, all their officers are assigned to different schools, and they go on their, on their free time to go out there and read to the kids and have fun, interact, and again, be those, be those role models. And, uh, and they all do a, a great job, Officer Cole and Corporal Kirk. Yeah, one of the opportunities that, that's, uh, we're currently working on, city manager and myself, is, is maybe, uh, dispatching for another agency. And one of the things that we did, uh, again, Deanna Maribau, we visited, it sounds like Police Communications Center, a very large, uh, facility, first class, um, Joey McDonald's was communications manager. She was gracious enough, gracious enough to give us a, a tour of the facility. And this is an opportunity to see, uh, kind of best practices, and if we're looking at dispatching for other agencies, how many additional resources will we need, um, and equipment? So, we learned a lot, and had a chance to sit down and, and listen to dispatching, and, and those channels, they were, you know, they've got four screens, they've, they've got twenty-five, thirty, um, officers on a channel. And so, uh, it was a good, good visit, good, uh, you know, again, stu- doing the due diligence if we, uh, move forward with this opportunity. Uh, I wanna give a shout out, um, to, to Anthony Vieira. He ran a half marathon, that's thirteen point one miles in full uniform. This was a fundraiser for the Officer Memorial Fund that helps benefit those families that have lost their... This was a fundraiser for the Officer Memorial Fund that helps benefit those families that have lost their loved ones, uh, tragically through, uh, through the hands of, of, um, evil people, and so, uh, I'm proud of the, I'm proud of him running that, I mean, I can't even run, you know, a mile in a uniform, this guy ran it three, thirteen point, with other, the other department members, you see a couple of guys that share his department, Merced PD, um, and so it was a great job by, by Anthony. And lastly, um, uh, Captain Soria, represented the Police Department, the last festival here, uh, which was Sunday, again, congratulations for five hundred fifty years of celebration, and, uh, he, he truly enjoyed his time out there, and so, um, I appreciate the work that Captain Soria does, and, you know, inter, interjecting into community and, and representing the Police Department. Oh, actually, I have a couple more, a couple more pictures. December eleventh, we moved it up a week, and we're gonna actually have Santa, Santa's gonna visit, it's at Livingston here on December eleventh, and he's gonna be giving out a lot of toys, and, uh, we're gonna help the elves wrap in this room on December tenth, and we're, anybody's welcome to come for the community to help wrap, wrap some gifts for the kids to, for Santa to give out, and we will enjoy the opportunity on December eleventh to partner with Santa and give out a lot of, uh, presents to the community, so, but that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does Public have any questions for Chief? Counsel? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I thought I saw, I must have been dreaming, I thought I saw, oh, there he is, he just slipped right in, engineering, Mario?
No reports.
No reports, just snuck in, huh?
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Sanchez, legal? Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, our mayor and council and Public, uh, there's a few items, one, I just wanted to update the council that, uh, our utility stakeholders met last week, and we've been meeting for several months. One of the items that's gonna be coming before you on the December third council meeting is the, uh, proposed rates, utility rates, um, for this coming year, and it, should council move forward with that, uh, then the forty-five day review period will start. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start the program, uh, the community workshops in, in English, in Spanish, and in Punjabi, so there'll be an opportunity for, uh, different segments of the community to come out, just like we did the last go-around. And, um, in addition to that, uh, we, uh, I don't know if you recall, but we had, uh, Patricia Ramos here at last council meeting, and she wanted to get going with a, a complete count committee, so that we make sure that our community, uh, that representatives from our community who know our community can really guide them so that everybody here in Livingston gets counted. And so, she dropped off, uh, a booklet here that I have, but we need, we're gonna need volunteers. She specifically asked to see if there was anybody on the council who would like to be on the complete count committee, uh, and so it would be made up of community members, business folks, you know, elected officials, et cetera, and, um, and she, she gave me a timeline, uh, so I have the timeline here, and, um, so, really, they would like to get going as soon as possible, so if anybody's interested, uh, again, the census is very, very important, I'll pass it out, so you guys can take a look at that. So if you have any questions on that, uh, please let me know. Also, uh, I provided a copy of this, uh, but, um, Barbara Raffsler's, you know, put out a, a nice little write-up, uh, and, uh, this is in relation to the Certified Farmer's Market, and some information that's, is very interesting to read for you. Did you wanna say anything, highlight anything specifically on this, uh, Barbara? Did you wanna highlight anything specific on this?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
I was hoping everybody would be here, Barbara Raffsler, fourteen fifty-eight Main Street. Um, I gave Jose these and asked him to put in, in your, um, agenda items, and it just, it shows our, our museum, which I thank you very much for your support, as well as staff and, and, uh, the industrial staff over there. But we do have, you know, a number of people coming on the night of the, uh, the, um, October, from, from May to October, and so we've had, you know, a number of people, and I'm hoping that you'll read the following, um, comments that some of them made, it's, it's ironic. And it's, one of them was, "Thank you for keeping our history alive," and in the pictures, and of course, the yearbooks, and things that are there to be enjoyed, the kids come in to look at their kids, your dads, mom and dads in their yearbook, so, but I just wanted to thank you, Jose, for giving this out, and that, uh, I hope sometime you can come visit, I know we're here from two to, two to four on Sundays, but I would be happy to take you on a tour, and, uh, anytime, if you give me a couple of days, I'd be happy to, so, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, uh, lastly, uh, we talked about the traffic, uh, ad hoc committee, so, um, I, I did receive some names, if there's some other individuals that would like to participate, we're gonna get going pretty quick, the chief's going to be chairing that committee, and, um, we're gonna have, uh, so Mr. Bri- Brian White is gonna start on Monday, so we're gonna, uh, get, get his feet wet right away, and, uh, and then we'll have representation, Mr. Bath from the, uh, Planning Commission, so if anybody's interested in, in participating, we would love to, uh, get you involved. And that is all I have for now, unless you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Ramirez? If not, uh, City Councilmember announcements and reports, Councilwoman, uh, Batista?
I just wanna thank you for your newsletter that, uh, that you, well, that was provided to us, again, I, I, I adore the Historical Museum, I've been in there a few times, um, and it's, it's grown quite a bit, and one of the, uh, workshops that I had attended when I was at the League of Cities had addressed preserving our community's history, who are we? And many of our youth, um, well, many of our citizens, just like the comments and the articles say is, you know, I didn't even know it existed, so, I mean, I, I would like more people to come out to the community and, and really find their roots here in Livingston, where they started, and, and I've been here nearly fifty years, so, and I love this community, and just finding out and, and keeping and preserving who our identity, you know, who we really are, so thank you for that.
Kate, do you have any stories that you'd like to share with user newsletter reading?
Actually, what I'm trying to spearhead is, again, I'm from Livingston Youth Football, and I wanna take back that history of how sports, youth sports have come across, um, the, the ages for Livingston, and particularly in, in football, um, who's gone on to the military, who's, who's gone on to college, and where they started, starting from, um, uh, Mr. Garcia onward to the present day, so that would be something I would like to sit again with, with people in the community.
Mr. Aguilar?
Uh, just wanna say also, yeah, thank you for, um, definitely keeping that museum operating, um, I've been in there several times, I've taken my son, uh, years ago, actually, went in there looking for some fire department history, and I was able to make a copy of that picture right there, of the original fire station. Um, but yeah, definitely a lot of history, very neat, um, and I recommend everybody, uh, take a trip with a family, so thank you, and that's it.
Uh, thank you for me, since it'd be, uh, time for the museum today, I hope everybody goes to, at least go there once, and I ask you to pull the yearbook from the high school nineteen seventy-nine, you guys won't recognize me in that picture. Been pulled there at that, you know, that, the old days, you know? And also, you know, our, that, that piece here for the phone, it reminds me of Green Acres, you know, where they have that, you know, so, it's, there's a lot of good stuff in the museum, so I hope everybody has the opportunity to go there and look at least once. And on the other comment I have is, uh, I'm glad that we're getting started with our traffic committee, or whatever, you know, for the lack, whatever we're gonna come up with. As, as the chief mentioned, everybody knows, Sunday, we had the, uh, the secret five hundred fiftieth, uh, anniversary celebration, first of all, the community wanted me to pass on, as always, a big thank you to entire staff at City Livingston Police, Explorers, Public Works, everybody, there's this pitch right in, you couldn't ask for better, better support, as always, you know, I mean, each year, support's always there, and the community truly appreciates that. And of course, uh, when you have a large number of people, you also get a large number of concerns raised, and, and we all know the tragedy that happened at Briarwood several years back with a pedestrian, we all, we all know that. And unfortunately, a small group of people, motorists, always cause concerns, and I've had complaints of speeders going through Briarwood. And the citizens are really, or the residents in that area are really, really saying, "Please do something because we don't want the history to repeat itself." We don't know what you can do, they asking for speed bumps, they're asking for any type of control, they're saying, they literally have drag racers on the street sometimes, they'll line up next to each other and just ride down the street. So, I know, I don't know how long it will take for the committee to come up, but at least until then, I, I'm, I'm asking the police department, the chief knows what to do, we don't have to tell him, he's, he knows, so, and also, it may be one of the first areas the traffic committee can look at to see what we can do to slow things down. You know, it doesn't have to be speed bumps, but I think they're not looking for any particular technology, as it were, but they are looking for a solution. You know, they said if speed bumps work, we'll take it, but they just want, they said they're, they're afraid to put their kids out there sometimes, so Chief, I'm sure you wanna, I'm sure you heard about it too, Chief, so if you wish to add to that, be more than, please do so.
Yeah, it's, it's actually very fitting, because, uh, one of the tasks that, uh, the new sergeant will be tasked with is putting together some traffic safety plans, um, and some enforcement plans, and so one of the things that we can, we can look at is how we can enforce speeding on that street, and then looking at some sort of mechanisms for citizens to notify, um, the Police Department when there are issues, traffic safety issues, that we can, you know, assign to an officer to, to look at, investigate, and enforce, so, but, uh, we will definitely be looking at that.
Yeah, one of the things, and I know what they do, but I don't know what it calls, but sometimes, uh, for traffic studies, for whatever, they put those little strips on there that counts the, how many vehicles or how fast they're going, can something like that maybe done to give you better data?
Sure, yeah, one of the things is the traffic safety study, um, and the counts, that's something the engineering department will be very familiar with, but to enforce, um, speed violations on specific streets, you, you have to have that, a current, uh, street survey. With eighty-fifth percentile being a certain speed, and then you, you have, you can enforce it, but some streets you don't need that, like residential twenty-five miles, you don't need a street survey, but, um, you know, it will, look at the different, uh, complaints that come in there, and we'll figure out what works out best, and at some point, if we have a, a major issue, then we might look at conducting a survey, but, you know, those type of things do, do take resources, uh, away from other projects, that's the thing, we just have to balance those, those needs out.
And Chief, I understand it takes resources, we all, we all know, and we're, we understand it, but when you have your kids and you're worried about your kids, and, uh, we look at resources, we're looking at their kids or their family members, you know, so they don't see it as resources, they see it as, "How do we protect our families?" So, and I understand, and, and I know we're always doing our best, you know, but, so perhaps that's be the, one of the first areas, like you said, if you, whatever you have planned for next sergeant, or whatever, whatever you do out there, uh, I think with that engineering or whatever, you know, I think that truly needs to be paid attention to.
Yeah, no, and I'll agree with you a hundred percent, we, we, it's not that we're not gonna do surveys, we, we always send our officers out to the schools, enforce, uh, violations around schools, and we will do that, kids come number one, what I'm saying is, is whenever, every time a complaint comes in, we can't do a survey for that street, 'cause you might get fifty, fifty, fifty complaints, and, and those things are just, we have to prioritize and find out which ones are the most, uh, active and...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not trying, I'm just relaying what I hear, as always, you know? And, and I told them I would tell you, but they said they wanted to make sure, and that's the reason I'm doing the public form, normally I just go to the city manager or say, "I've heard these complaints," as the usual, uh, pass-through, but I always wanted to let them know that the city heard you, you know, so that's the reason I'm saying it here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And I, I did also wanna give Babs a, a big shout-out for all the work, if you look at some of these pictures here, these are from the, from the museum that we made copies of, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of history here, if you guys know the Dalton Gang, the Dalton Gang was here, there's some neat stuff going on there, so...
Oh, yeah, Dalton Gang was here.
And, uh, some of the first settlers way back when, some of them settled right there on the Merced River, I mean, it's, it's fascinating to, to go to the museum, but thank you, Babs, for all the work you do. Yes, I'm not that old yet, but I am a, I am a lifetime member of the museum, so I'd encourage anybody that wants to be a member, uh, see Babs.
Okay, you know, Chief, now that you're up, I can't let you sit without at least bringing up a couple of things.
Okay.
What happened to your mustache? What happened to your mustache?
I, what?
This is November!
I know, I know, if you looked at one of those pictures, it was too wide, and it got wider, so I figured, yeah, I'll just, I'll just skip it this year.
Okay, well, I'll give you a pass on that, and now, when are you planning to lose to the fire department?
You know, we're just, uh, waiting for Recreation to schedule next game, you know, we've got a couple ringers lined up, and, um, you know, I, I know the fire does the same thing, so it's all for fun.
Okay, I know, all right, thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to citizens' comments.
This section of the agenda allows the members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda, members of the public who recognize the mayor should come forward to the lecture and identify themselves, comments on number eleven to three minutes, in accordance with the state open media laws, no action will be taken by the city council's union for items which are on the agenda, seeing that members of the item, public will be provided opportunity to address the city council, each item is brought up for discussion.
Catherine Shell Rodriguez, P O Box one sixty-three, and I have two questions for the city attorney. One is about the Brown Act, and the other is about the FCC, COPA, and the city's YouTube channel. My Brown Act question has to do with sending more than two council members to the same conference. What violations or possible violations could occur when more than two council members are at the same location? So that's number one. Number two. City council meetings often include children, discussions of children's activity, or presentations made by children, which could put the city at risk of fines by the FCC under the current draft of the COPA enforcement guidelines. This is the comment period for COPA at the moment, and I was wondering if the city or the League of Cities is doing anything or looking into this, uh, since it could have possible effects on the future of cities being able to stream or have videos on YouTube.
Legal, go ahead and respond, please.
And regarding your, your last question, I'll have to follow up to see if the league is doing anything, I know that it's come up in some circles, but it hasn't really been looked at, uh, jurisdictions aren't really moving away from what they're doing, but let me look at it a little further, I know it's, it's coming up more and more. Um, regarding the Brown Act, um, there's actually an exception in the Brown Act for attending of conferences, a specific exception, now, what, what may happen, what potential violations, if you have, anytime you have a quorum of the council, which is three or more, um, somewhere at the same time, if they discuss, let's say, business, um, city business, um, that could be potentially a violation, but as far as attending conferences, the Brown Act does have specific exceptions, um, that I have jurisdictions that the entire council goes, for example, to the League of Cities or other conferences, again, there is an exception for that.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think we'll be any different, uh, than three council members, uh, being, and there's an exception to a public event or a private event, a ceremonial event, uh, three members could go to a wedding, or worse yet, I mean, unfortunately, funerals, you know, there is, there are places you can go, and you can... And you can go to a football game. There's no law against three members being together at one time, as long as you're not talking city business. Okay, uh, so, any other, any other citizens' comments? Seeing no one coming forward, the citizen's comment now is closed. Consent calendar, the consent agenda. Items on the consent can, can, calendar considered routine. And non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless a separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city manager requests that some stuff gotta be removed. Number nine, approve the warrant registered dated November thirteen, twenty nineteen. Approve of the minutes meeting held November fifth, twenty nineteen. Number eleven, resolution amending the City of Livingston Conflict of Interest Code and accepting by, by annual notice. Number twelve, city council to authorize the sale of surplus property. Number thirteen, second reading adoption of the ordinance number six four one. Amending the City of Livingston zoning map to change the various properties from downtown commercial to limited industrial. Uh, does anybody wish to, uh, I, I, I see someone is, uh, citizen requesting. Uh, what is the item, please?
Uh, eleven and twelve.
Please come forward, make a comment.
Catherine Shell Rodriguez, again, about the, the Livingston Conflict of Interest Code. Uh, on that one, I was wondering when it would be up on the code online. Uh, I looked it up and the only thing that I, the only entry that I got when I looked it up, what had to do with conflict of interest and the planning commission. But the actual code itself didn't pop up on a search. Um, the second thing having to do with the sale of surplus property, if I understand the staff report correctly, the chief is requesting the, the leeway to donate vehicles to either the high school or charity as opposed to sending them to a sales house. Is that correct and is that what you're going to approve?
Uh, Mr., uh, Ramirez?
Yes. So, as it relates to the first item in question, um, I'll defer that one to Legal because I'm not specifically from there. But I do know is that this specific, um, uh, uh, action is done every year. And we added this year, the, let's see, on the list was, was a planning commission, wasn't it? Uh, yeah, that's right. Police incentive. Yeah, that's correct.
So, just real quickly, if I may, uh, new manager, so, I, I think your, your question, Catherine, was when is it gonna be online? Um, I, I don't know. I think that, um, I think staff will work on, on seeing if there's going to be a, a place for it online. I know you've, you've been on there already looking for it. It hasn't been on there, but as soon as it's approved here, um, I'm sure we'll talk to the I T folks and see where it would go online.
Thank you, Sanchez, for the clarification. I was under the impression that the question was related to a specific code that was listed in some state website. So, now I understand. So, yes, we will make sure to get that, uh, on, on our, online on our website ASAP. As it relates to the surplus property, uh, yes, that is, that's what the, uh, our police chief is requesting. Uh, anything specific?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that's what the specific thing you are going to approve, is allowing him to make the donation as opposed to just automatically sending it to a auction house.
Yeah, I, uh, what that kind of coming from is that there used to be a bit of discussion within the community of if you don't dispose of it through auctions, is somebody able to, employer, somebody able to get a better deal? But in this, this case, it's being donated to charity. I don't think anybody here would, uh, argue that donating it to the high school for our kids to get a first-time experience is any kind of a conflict. I don't believe that. And if you find another charity, you know, cause, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm not mentioning names, but as long as it's not going to an individual nonprofit, you know? I think that puts everything at ease for that, for, for at least for this case. If it was saying that we're gonna allow city employees to bid on it, that would be a difficult, more of a harder decision to make if, if they were to pass this. But in this case, I don't really see it as a issue.
Thank you.
Uh, any further comments on these items since somebody, since it came up? If not, uh, I will entertain a motion at this time?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Aguilar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Standing by Councilwoman Batista. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Okay, moving on to item fourteen, discussion of potential action items. This is a resolution acknowledging the receipt of the compliance report as required by Senate Bill twelve oh five.
Good evening, council members and everyone in attendance this evening. My name's Richard Bond. I'm a battalion chief with Cal Fire, serving as your city fire marshal. And I'm here to report on Assembly Bill twelve oh five. Now, Assembly Bill twelve oh five was voted on by Governor Brown and signed into law on September twenty-seventh of last year. And what its direction to us is, as a fire department, is to report to you the number and types of inspections that we are mandated to perform. Now, these mandates to inspect have been in place for many, many years. So, basically, twelve oh five is our chance to let you know what we're out there doing and, and what type of inspections. Um, this last year, or this year in twenty nineteen, we've inspected all the schools within the city limits, which includes seven schools. And there's seven required, seven were inspected. We inspect all hotels, motels, and lodging houses. And the requirement was for two that are identified within the city, and two were inspected. And then all apartment buildings of three units or more. And we've identified thirty within the city limits and we've inspected thirty. Um, the fiscal impact, basically, we do charge an operating permit fee to the hotels, motels, lodging houses, and all apartments for that inspection based on their size. Schools, we have not been charging any fees to, um, just because it's, it doesn't seem appropriate at this time.
Okay, you said there were seven schools, but it says here five.
That was a typo. That was a typo on the...
You have seven schools?
There's seven schools. That includes headstarts.
Oh, gotcha.
So, so we've been doing the headstarts. It's, it's not clear in the law if headstarts are to be inspected, but it's a fire life safety inspection, so we include them.
Then the seven, that's fine, you know, I mean, I don't, okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, any questions? Uh, anything else?
That's it.
This item is open to the public. Does anybody from the audience come, please to come forward? If not, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a resolution acknowledged, so does anybody make, do we need to make a... Yeah. Yeah, can, uh, does anybody wish to make a motion to...
I'll make a motion, uh, acknowledging the receipt of the compliance report as required by Senate Bill one two zero five.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Batista. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Okay, moving on to, this is a resolution approving the contract with R L Frent Construction Incorporated for the rehabilitation improvements for the Singh Park Lift Station.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public, Anthony Chavaria, Public Works. Counsel, the staff report you have before you, a little bit of background on it. The Singh Park Lift Station pumps storm water from the Singh Park Basin to the Arena Irrigation Canal. The lift station is located at the southwest corner of Singh Park Basin on Peach Avenue. The existing two pumps, piping, guide rails, and control panels require repairs to improve reliability of the lift station. City staff prepared specifications for this work and provided then prospective bidders for quotes. A total of three contractors responded to the call for bids, and they are as follows. Facel Construction, Amerine Systems, R L Frent Construction. A review of Facel's proposals show that their line of work is primarily home remodeling and does not possess proper experience with municipal work. Amerine Systems did not reach out to staff to request a site visit to properly evaluate existing conditions and prepare a responsible proposal for the work. City staff recommends completing the lift station rehabilitation improvements using R L Frent Construction, who submitted the lowest responsible bid for the work. Fiscal impact. The lift station rehabilitation costs will be funded a hundred percent from the capital wastewater enterprise funds included in the nineteen twenty budget. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, thank you. This item is open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward and ask questions? I don't see anybody coming forward. This item is now close to the public. Council comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make motion to award a contract to Low Press. Am I the right one? Yes. Uh, Low Press to convert the existing arsenic absorption treatment.
There you go.
Oh, yes, sorry. Sorry. Uh, make a motion approving the contract with R L Frent Construction for the rehabilitation improvements for the Singh Park Lift Station.
I have a motion by Councilman Aguilar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Batista. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Uh, Ms. Aguilar, don't worry. You know, I just, I chewed up his name earlier, so it's okay, and I, and I know better, so...
Thank you.
Thanks. Anthony. Okay, uh, this item, next item is the resolution to award the contract to Low Press to convert existing arsenic absorption treatment process at well sixteen to oxidation filtration process.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. Um, we'll, uh, tag team this one. Uh, this is related to the well sixteen TCP, uh, uh, treatment project that's actually bidding now. The, the well sixteen has some arsenic, presently has some arsenic treatment facilities. And the media is, uh, what we call breaking through, which means it's about to, uh, start not working really well. So, when that happens, you have to change, uh, media. With the well sixteen, uh, plans, we were actually transferring or, or switching the method of, um, of treatment from absorption to oxidation filtration. And that's to match the other ones that you already have with wells, um, thirteen and seventeen. So, what's happening is, uh, uh, this is coming a little earlier than we were hoping for. So, we'll have to either wait for when the, the big project is being done and do it at that time, but we would have to, in the meantime, change this media, which would be an additional hundred twenty thousand dollars. So, what, what we're asking, uh, or proposing is to go ahead and do the switch to, from absorption to, uh, the oxidation filtration now ahead of the big project. So, it's basically doing one phase of it a little ahead of time. To do that, we have to engage Low Press, which is, that's the folks that do this. All this stuff is proprietary, so that it's, all this media. And the city is happy with what's, um, being used at thirteen and, and, uh, and seventeen. So, that's the reason to switch. So, we're, we're looking at, um, awarding this, uh, contract to, uh, Low Press. And it's a hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Uh, that amount will be eligible for reimbursement under the, uh, agreement that you have with, with S R F, with the state. So, it's basically doing the, the work a little ahead of time. And we confirmed with the state that that would be fine. Uh, it's, it's, it, it is sole sourcing because you're just engaging Low Press. But it, it's a, there's a public interest finding because of the other facilities that the city are, already has, um, using these, uh, this system and this media. So, uh, in terms, in terms of, um, uh, fiscal impact, the city would have to, to pay the hundred ninety thousand dollars and, and change a little ahead of, they would have to pay as the project, uh, the big project came about, which is first, we'll start first quarter next year. We'll bid next month. It'll take a little while to get going. This can be done, I think it's in a couple of months, they'll start doing that.
And, and again, as Mario said, uh, the state did confirm that this is eligible for reimbursement under the, uh, S R F one.
Anything else to add?
I'm sorry?
Just under, just the point of clarification, when we, when staff is mentioning the S R F means that it's, it's part of the loan package, uh, that we're getting, so that has to be paid back.
Thank you for clarifying that it's not a grant, it's a loan.
It's the, yeah, clean water, S R F loan.
It's not a grant, it's a loan.
It's not a grant.
Stay revolving fund loan, that's correct.
Correct. It's, it's a four million dollar loan.
Yes, yes.
Yes. So, this, this is a small portion of that loan.
Thank you. This item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward? Thank you, council. Any comments, suggestions, or motions?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the right one.
We, we got it down to an art now, you know?
Make a motion to award a contract to Low Press to convert the existing arsenic absorption treatment process at well number sixteen to an oxidation fil- filtration process.
I have a motion by Councilman Aguilar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Batista. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is the, uh, item, uh, resolution approving the necessary budget amendment for payments under the settlement agreement between the City of Livingston, city and the Livingston City Fire L P related to the country village development. Uh, so, uh, I'll give it to, who wants to tag team this one first? I'll leave, leave it to, uh, council, uh, Mr. Sanchez, then Mr. Ramirez, step in as you wish.
Perfect, Mayor. So, Mayor, members of the council, as the council and members of the public know, um, the city is currently involved in litigation, uh, with Livingston seventy-five L P. Again, this litigation is currently in the Superior Court of the County of Merced. Uh, the council has met, as the agendas have stated, under closed session, um, to discuss this litigation. This litigation arises out of Livingston seventy-five, uh, claiming certain reimbursements as successor in interest to Dunmore Home Country Villas. And this is related to the Country Villas subdivision. Um, in order to, uh, in order to avoid the cost of uncertainty of litigation and provide, um, for a complete and full mutual release and discharge of any future lawsuits, uh, related to this, the, the city and Livingston seventy-five decided to settle this case. The settlement, um, happened recently. Um, the settlement agreement has certain requirements, monetary requirements. And again, these are for reimbursements, the claims are for reimbursements. Uh, Livingston seventy-five is saying that the city owes them through development agreements and other agreements that the city entered into with Dunmore Homes, uh, Dunmore, uh, Country Villas. Again, given the, the nature of the case, um, the parties decided that the best course of action is to settle. As far as the, the improvements in question, as the council knows and the public may remember, there were several, uh, public improvements out there, such as, uh, there was a twelve-inch water line, for example, modification of the existing storm drain, um, system. There was also a... was also a park involved, I think it's a 12.6 acre parcel of land for a park. The settlement agreement has monetary requirements for the city, and this item actually will authorize the budget amendments needed in order to make those payments. Specifically, the city would be required to pay $350,000 within 21 days, and it would also be required to turn over and to pay the water connection fees and the park and loo fees paid by Bright Development. Bright Development is currently developing the lots that are related to the subdivision. They have 64 lots in question. And again, that would be, the requirement would be for the city to turn over the collected water connection fees and park and loo fees that they've collected from Bright Development for this project and the future fees they collect, again, from Bright Development for this specific project, and we're talking about 64 lots. The staff report indicates the current amounts of those fees. Happy to answer any questions, mayor.
Mr. Ramirez, do you have anything to add?
Only to highlight that the city did receive the 12.6 acres and the actual water line and the storm drain improvements. So, in essence, even though I personally do not agree with the, the, the different dynamics of the situation, this is the best we can do, and so, at the end of the day, we're paying for something that we did receive. And so, for that, that's basically the only thing I wanted to communicate at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. This item is now open to the public.
Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, PO Box 163. My first question is, this is going to be a lump sum payment?
Certain, go ahead, tell the percentages.
Just, just real quickly, the lump sum payment, the $350,000, and whatever the city has already collected from those impact fees, the future collection of impact fees, that would be on a monthly basis as those payments come in from Bright Development, who's currently developing the 64 lots in that subdivision.
Okay, because if you add it all, if you add everything up altogether under fiscal impact, that comes to around, what, around $500,000 in total? So, that's all going to be paid out in one lump sum?
No, the $350,000 obligation comes within 21 days of the, of entering into the agreement. The agreement was just entered into last Friday. So, that, within 21, 21 days, $350,000, and whatever the city has collected already from the impact fees. I don't have that number in front of me, but whatever the city has actually collected.
Yeah, so it's still going to be one lump sum, not monthly installments?
No, there's still lots that are not developed, that Bright Development has not paid for those impact fees. Those would be monthly installments of any future development impact fees paid by Bright Development, at which they haven't paid for those 64 lots.
And this is a combination of general fund money and also development impact fee funds?
Like the, the park and loo fees?
The park and loo fee, those would be development impact fees.
For parks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what's this going to do to all of our departments in terms of their budgets?
Well, the $350,000 is going to come from our reserves, and the development impact fees, of course, are going to be coming from those specific areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward, council comments? For me, I don't have anything either, other than to say. We did get a park out of there, and there were things that the city did receive, so it's not like we're giving up that money. It's, there is a value to the Max Foster Sports Complex Park. That is the, we've got in return, so basically, we're paying a portion of that park back, is what we're doing. So, nobody likes to pay off fees or lose. But this day and age, costs a lot of money to fight. And if you, if there is, even us, we were having a hard time justifying, should we or should we not, and then, we could have tried to fight it, but in the end, you can pay for fees and then still pay for the original cost. And, but this way, we were able to negotiate down to a certain percentage, because if you don't negotiate, and you end up in court and you lose, you pay for the total amount of demand. So, and there are returning fees, which could significantly add the cost. So, I've been doing this for a while, and we don't like to lose, but sometimes there are certain realities you do have to face, and unfortunately, this is one of them. So, I know the council looked long and hard before they made their decision as well. So, it's a difficult one, but sometimes you have to do what you have to do to make, make things equal and to move on. So, with that, I will end my comment. Anybody, staff, wish to add anything further? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion approving the necessary budget amendments for payments under a settlement agreement between the City of, the City and Livingston 75 LP related to the country Villas development.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Batista, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Batista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Thank you, council. Any further business? If not, we are in adjournment. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, we are going, we're not going to adjourn, we're going to go quickly into closed session. We had just a minor little work to do, and we will come back and report out. We're not in adjournment. We're going to go into closed session real quick.